First up for general information is Linda Seawick.
Good evening gentlemen. I'm here to clarify the status of my property on Ed North Hadley, the old garage that Jack and I bought in 2011. And my husband, we rescued that historical garage and did a lot of work on that property and we had a license. And as you know, Jack Kerslis died, you know, about two years ago this week. And I kept, I've kept the property. I am now the manager of that LLC. I own it. So, I want to be able to sell it and I want to make sure that I'm representing it correctly.
Which property is this?
The last garage.
Last goes old garage.
Okay, yeah, last goes old garage.
Yeah, yeah. So, basically, we had a license through the town. I just let it go this last year, so I know that it's still okay legally for another year to be able to sell it as that.
License for what?
Used cars. Used cars and repair.
Okay, but it hasn't been used as a garage in how many years?
It was used as a garage when my husband was alive. And as I told you, I kept it active the last couple of years. I paid all the bills, I've done all the work on it. Nobody was, I was not physically there selling cars.
Okay.
Okay, so it's in the limited business district?
Right.
And facilities for cleaning, sale, or repair of motorized vehicles are not permitted in limited business district?
I have my class two sale of secondhand motor vehicles.
So that's issued by the select board?
Yeah.
And that's not a zoning determination?
That's just a distant license. If it hasn't been actually, just because there's a license on the property, if it hasn't been actually being used...
What determines active use?
Has vehicle been sold out of there?
Probably not this last year, but probably before that.
What does last year mean?
This is 18th, 17th.
So, I drive by there twice a day.
I know you do.
And, you know, there's no activity there.
Because my husband is dead. That's the main reason. Jack bought that after we lost our property in Vermont to the hurricane. Many of you knew him. He put his heart and soul into renovating that property, renovating that house, which was a disaster. And we put a lot of time and money into the property. Obviously, when you're with your partner who is the car person, you don't sell cars nonstop. I'm not that, no. So, it isn't, the whole LLC was placed in my name before Jack died. So I guess I'm trying to figure out what can be done there, because I have a person who would like to use it as a car business again. And since that was a history of that place, I'm here to find out what we can do. I know it's old, I know it was not the normal zoning for Hadley millions of years ago, but what would you do with it? You know, what would you suggest?
So, there's a list of what can be done in limited business district.
Right.
And there are a number of uses allowed. Retail, bank, small repair shop. There's, there's a chart with the lists with the allowable uses laid out there.
So even though my LLC says that I can own and manage real estate and operate a used vehicle sales business and a vehicle repair shop, you're saying that's not true? Is that what I'm hearing?
The LLC, that's from the statement of, that's what the LLC can do, but that doesn't have anything to do with where you can do it. That's what you filed with Secretary of the Common Law.
Correct, right.
Okay, they don't make zoning determinations.
So, are you basically denying me the privilege of continuing that as a business?
Not as a business.
Not as a used car business?
Repair or sale of motorized vehicles is not permitted in limited business district.
That was grandfathered properly, you know.
But yeah, the grandfathering, it was, is two years grandfathering.
Two years grandfathering.
Okay, so then I guess that's what she's got to figure out then.
Yeah, if you can prove that you sold vehicles out of there in the last two years, and probably the best way to do that is to bring in some bills of sale of vehicles that you sold or repaired. Because, I mean, it's only two years, and you've got to have records if that was done.
So you're saying June 6, 2016, until now?
I can't really get to that right now. All I know is this license just expired, so that's what I'm trying to figure out.
But the license isn't important. If you have, you're saying that your husband passed away, you know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that, less than two years ago, and he was repairing vehicles before he passed. If you can bring in bills of sale, repair logs, repair sheets, invoices that showed that you repaired or sold vehicles out of there in the past two years, your grandfather. If you don't have anything like that, then you haven't been doing, then we have nothing to prove that you were doing that.
I guess I assume when I paid for the bond and when I paid for the license and I paid for the plates, that that was all legitimate? Because that meant that legally it was still an act, an active business? That's what I assumed, because I'm not a...
The disletment grant you that privileges to sell automobiles there yet?
I haven't been there, I was told...
Okay, so, they usually, they usually want a zoning determination before they issue that regardless of...
So that must have happened previously?
That's been in effect for a little while now.
Yeah, because I recognize some of the...
But again, going back to, if you're, if you're, somebody has been repairing or selling vehicles out of there in the past two years, there has to be invoices and records of that.
If the person is dead who did it and I don't repair, how would that be?
There has to be log books or invoices. Someplace, those have to be kept for a longer period of time than just when they pass, the record don't disappear. That's the law.
Right.
Okay? So someplace, there has to be records of that. If there's records of that, bring them in, your grandfather. If you don't have records of that, all we can say is that it didn't happen and you're not grandfather. I'm sorry, but that's the law. That's zoning. And anybody that repairs vehicles knows you must keep records a minimum of five years. Might even be longer than that, especially if you're selling.
That garage started before the zoning act took place.
That's correct.
But then, when he passed away...
All I'm saying is if there's records, records in the last two years, then it reverts to the original...
Right, he did a wonderful job of cleaning it up and painting it and stuff.
Hadley was happy that we bought that, and that's why I'm feeling really...
But nevertheless...
Yeah, so, you know, like I said, the records have to be someplace, I don't know where, but if they're going to be around. If he, if the repairs were done, the law says you must keep these for several years.
Talk to your accountant, your CPA, see if he's got any records.
Then bring in a couple of invoices, one, two, is enough to show that, okay, this is what went on, this is the dates, this is what was done, and your grandfather. In fact, your grandfather back before limited business, your grandfather does a business, not limited business. Because it existed prior to limited business, limited business. That business has been in place since well before zoning took, was in effect.
You're required, it has to require to carry a log book. That's date, serial numbers, everything is on that log book.
So, those books have got to be someplace, if they exist. Hopefully they do.
That was a class two license?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, then you're required to have that, for whoever the name was, you know.
So how do I find out what kind of businesses are permitted there if I don't have this? I mean, I wish I'd done this last year, Bill, but I was too...
Understand. Just go to the Hadley website, the Hadley Mast website, go for the planning board and look up the zoning bylaws and look up limited business, and it gives you a whole list of things that are permitted. Which chapter is that? I think it's actually going to be in section two.
Yeah, section two, the table of uses, there's an entire column of what is allowed in limited business.
Thank you for your time.
Next is Bill Gillian, Britt Manus, and Don Craftka.
Friends, this is Ideal Storage on 10 Mill Valley Road.
Yes.
And he would like to tear down a couple of his older structures and build a three-story structure in their place.
For storage? A three-story, a three-story storage?
Yeah, climate control.
Oh, okay, is it going to be multifloors?
Three stories.
Or just three stories in, or just a high ceiling?
Multi-floor.
Multi-floor, okay.
And looking at the table of the setbacks and the other two things, the ones that are shaded in are the only things that are changed.
Parking, parking is changing considerably.
Yes, and we have no, there's no regulations that we know of that are telling us how many parking spaces is.
No, two for one, two square feet for every square foot of building.
Yes, so originally, for the last 20 years, he's had something like 10 spaces.
Right.
Existing.
Right.
And he has room for 100 or more. But there's, but there's no need for parking, except for your bylaw.
The bylaw requires it, so if you don't need it, you have to provide for it either, you don't have to build it if you don't need it, but you need to have the space on your site for it, or you need to buy through T. Transfer Development Rights the ability to put that space. We agree, you don't need the space for that much storage. However, however, the bylaw is the bylaw, we can't waive that, so you need to either provide it on site or buy TDR.
And if we go to the ZBA, because they did grant the variance a few years ago when we were thinking of putting up the second phase of the buildings, two-story, and it was just way out back.
Well...
And the ZBA did grant the variance for the parking.
For what?
For parking.
Okay, I don't really remember that. Now...
But the problem, the problem we face in many buildings become multi-use after a while. Rented out for offices, other situations, so we've run into that before, so that's, that's the reason.
To be honest, they should not have granted the variance. Granted, granting variances, so there's a couple of, you know, topography, a few other things, but there is an option for the parking, and that's to purchase TDR. Okay, so, it's not like if you can't, if you don't have the space, you can't do it at all, there is an option, you've got to purchase TDR rights and...
What's that?
Transfer Development Rights. For every 2,000 square feet of parking, you buy one acre, I believe it is, of TDR.
That's section 17 of the zoning bylaw, farm land preservation by law. Well, my version is different than yours.
Different than yours, let me see this.
Seventeen, Roman numeral seventeen.
Let me show you where the table is.
Seventy point nine.
That's just right here, right?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Right here.
Three over there too, it just isn't, it isn't.
Right here, right there, there is, one acre of developable land equals 2,000 square feet of parking area. And the current price of a developable...
Land value.
Just so you'll know what the actual cost is, one acre would cost you $99.78. Would give, $99.78 gives you one acre of TDR land, and that equates 2,000 square feet So I don't know how many square feet you're talking here.
Be 18,000 feet per floor, but the first floor is already got storage there, so that would be grandfathered, I imagine, so I imagine it would be...
So they need 36,000, 36,000 square feet. Of building, you'd need 72,000 square feet of parking, so I don't know what you have on the site. That's a lot of parking.
Well, we're taking out two buildings, right?
Yeah, that, we said the first, but the first floor is covered by the first floor of your building in ballpark figures.
Well, it's two acres of parking you would need, and your whole site is nine acres. Looks like you wouldn't have it on there.
Right.
But it also means that he has a lot of land, so he maybe only needs to buy...
Well, but all, all of these are going to be someplace in the parking, you know, you've got to go back in time because this would...
Oh, you can't just start with what he's adding.
No, because this, this, this has to be included as well. And so you've got to go back and see what the variance was, what the original plans were, there's a lot of work to be done going backwards to find it, okay, these, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine buildings, require this for parking, this is what we had for parking, this is the variance we were granted, what's covered, what's not covered, and then go forward with that.
How many variances were...
According to them, they went for one.
Just one, one variance on the total project?
Yeah, on the second phase when we were putting...
What about the first stage?
No, it wasn't necessary to get a variance.
So, but assume that, I doubt you have excess parking if you went for variance. So the 36,000 square...
Again, that was the variance when we were going to do those additional buildings, all the two-story. So that's four or five buildings, now we're just taking out two buildings, putting up one building, three stories. That variance was four, four or five two-story buildings.
Again, you'd have, you'd have to go look back in your records and the drawings and what was, what do you need, what did you grant, what was variance, I don't know. There's some, some homework that has to be done on your part to research this and come up with the answers.
Yeah.
Okay?
In addition to that, do you see any other red flags?
Only to make sure conservation, because you're near some wetlands there, but you know about that, you've just got to go through the wetlands, conservation, whatever.
Yeah, or not increasingly.
I, I'm just saying, but that's the, as far as everything else that you want to do, the three-story building is permitted, you're in industrial zone, you've got a height to the thing, there's a certain height within the industrial zone.
Is this lane within the aquifer?
That's a detention pond.
Detention pond. This is, this is in the aquifer, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, at that point, yeah.
Okay.
No, the whole section here is aquifer, we judge, you know.
You know, so, you know, you're very, very close on your percent coverage of the site for building, just got to make sure that that is...
Accurate.
Right, right, okay. Building height, in it...
permitted to be 50.
I was going to say, you're in industrial zone, so you've got like a 50-foot height to 45, so you're well within that.
Right.
Open space, again, you're tight on open space, just make sure that that's a, those calculations are good.
Good, yeah.
Okay. Other than those things, the biggest thing is parking, the rest...
And the conservation commission, do they meet weekly, monthly?
I believe they kind of meet as needed.
Tuesday, you can go at the town hall, what's her name is there?
Janice.
Janice.
Janice Stone is there on Tuesdays, okay.
Go in there, bring the map and sit down with her, she's pretty good, she'll help you out.
You know, 44 solar, you're talking solar on a roof.
I think she's there till 11 o'clock.
Well, possibility, we're going to...
No, 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 I'm just saying, but it would be on the roof.
Yeah.
So there's no special permits required for that.
So, she's there till like 11 o'clock, I think, on Tuesdays. So you go there Tuesday morning, she'd be very helpful for you.
And then, assuming, then our next step after that would be to go to the ZBA?
No, you have to come back to the site.
Come back here, once you find out everything, like this is what we have for buildings, this is what we have for parking, this is what we need for parking, and then you come back here before you go to the ZBA, because what you're going to, what are you going to the ZBA for?
I don't know.
And that's why I said, you come back here after all, after you get that.
So you have to...
Well, they may be able to amend prior variance.
But that's a couple of years old. How old, that was several years ago, right? Yeah, yeah, that's, you can't really amend the older one.
No.
But they couldn't, that couldn't be used anywhere to this thing.
Well, you're, you're, if you were granted a variance, well, you're granted a variance that is very specific, it was granted for the purpose stated in that variance, but I don't know what that says. Okay?
And it does expire after three years now.
Right, but we just, we couldn't present that as an argument as to, even though it's expired...
There's, you could try, but in zoning, there is no so-called precedent-setting stuff. Every, every application is unique to itself.
So, that could be a possible, you know, it's expired.
We don't comment on that, okay, because it's up to the ZBA.
Okay, so...
Okay.
So you have to come before us with a site plan?
Yeah.
With the, the numbers, they, yes, we're willing to buy some TDR, Transfer Development Rights, extra parking, or, and, you know, is there enough green space? So we'll say yes, yes, or no, no?
And you could also try for, well, you know, you need 72,000 square feet of, what do we call it, TDR, that's 36 acres. That's a whole lot of money. So maybe you come and do a, let's, let's negotiate here. I'll buy this many acres of TDR and I'd like a variance for this. So there's something you'd have to decide on what would make business sense.
I got a question on this. This silver for TDR, could they, they turn around and remodel that for offices?
We would have to... We would have to put into the special permit that this site could only be used, they can't put into the variance, just so you understand.
Right.
The ZBA, a variance is granted to the property, not to you, not to the use, not to anything else, it is granted to the property. So if you're exempt from parking for this much building, you're exempt from parking, and if you sold it to somebody down the road, they're exempt from parking. However, in a special permit that we grant for site plan approval, and that's why TDR would be a good thing to even purchase just a couple of acres, because we could also, we could roll all the special permits and put conditions on the special permit that this site is to only be used for storage. If it is to be used for something else other than storage, climate controlled or anything else you want to call it, storage to me is storage, then we could say you need to come back to the planning board and go through a whole new process because you don't have adequate parking possibly for the new use. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Not all, but I'm hoping Mr. Gillian understands some, John understands some.
But he, he needs to know all this before you make a move.
So you know, fine, proper, but if, again, I don't want to annoy you, but...
Ask the questions now. Questions are easy.
If you drive by the facility, we've got eight acres there, at any given time, the maximum number of cars is probably six cars on eight acres. Now, at times there's more, maybe a bit more, a lot of times there's less, so if...
We're not questioning the need that you don't need the parking area, okay? Nobody up here is saying, well, you need 70,000 square feet of parking. We're trying to work out a way so that you don't need to put it in, so that it's not prohibitively expensive for you to do that, and to cover down the road, either you or somebody else, that if the use, to John's point, suddenly changes from storage, some, you know, 35 years from now, you no longer going to own Ideal Move, and maybe you sell it, or whoever your heirs are, sell it to somebody else, and they want to put in an industrial building there, or a business building.
But could that be granted, that should the use change, then those people need to come back?
That's exactly what I'm saying, but it cannot be in the variance. So the variance, a variance cannot have conditions. It's either granted for the use, period, okay? But a special permit can have conditions on it. So we could put those conditions on the special permit, okay?
Yeah, so long as you understand.
So we want you to understand that, and we also want you to understand that these are the things we want to work towards so that you get what you need and the town gets what they need, at least to some extent, and protect everybody so, from, from a disaster in 30 years, 40 years from now, okay? Or less, or whatever it might be.
So, I mean, because of how the bylaw is written, we have very limited authority to waive parking. We can waive a fraction of it under certain circumstances. And frankly, the ZBA should not be granting variances for parking, because it meets none of the statutory standards for it. So, you know, that's sort of the environment you're working in. We can't give you, we can't give you a waiver, and the ZBA shouldn't have given you a waiver. And part of it is, we have to be able to justify to the next guy who comes in looking for a variance, why he doesn't deserve it either.
Yeah, but again, apples to apples. You know, you look at that, whatever that purpose was, and it's a supermarket, you're doing 10 times that amount of parking.
You're putting in a very dense buildings on a property with very little parking. And so somebody down the road come in and say, well, you know, Ideal Storage did it, why can't I do it?
But it has to be apples to apples, right? I mean...
But they're not apples to apples, they don't care about apples to apples. They come, they come, they, they care about business to business, okay? And people will argue that till Akos come home. It makes sense apples to apple, but we don't see apples to apples most of the time, okay?
Let me ask, the majority of the existing building type that's on there now would never be converted to anything else, because it would be illegal. So we're talking about the, the possibility that the new building might change use and occupancy, but why would that, why would that require all the sheds to have...
How big are each of the shed, how big are each of the sheds, each of the units?
All the other units took up the property.
Yeah, all the young ones took up the property, so your shed, the new one is the problem.
You didn't knock them out.
No, I understand, I understand that. But I think someone said earlier that we have to count the existing built volume that's there.
Absolutely.
But that existing built volume would never be used for anything other than...
Makes no difference.
Doesn't matter, if the building is on a property, square footed, building is square footage of building, whether it's new or old or otherwise, it's, it's on the property, okay? So...
So we'll add up all of gross floor area, all three floors, total up, multiply it by two, then tells us how many square feet of land we have to have.
Yeah, Billy, what you should do is, you know, give us the total square footages and on that map, you know, and so...
I think so. Lot of area, 60.
Because there's going to be a certain amount of green space that's going to be required as well.
Yeah, the open space.
Open space.
Yeah, we comply with that. We're not changing that at all, because he's tearing down the building and putting another one, the same footprint.
Well, but nevertheless, if you include parking in some of that green space, you're usurping your open space for parking.
We're not to, the plan isn't to pave anything that's, that isn't already paved.
Yeah, but you're adding, you're adding two flights on top.
Yeah.
If you just had, took those two and just bought one flight, then there's no change. But when you're adding three stories, that makes the change.
Well, we have to get out the records and really do some...
You could do, you could do some research on finding all the details.
There's no way for you to acquire extra land where you are?
No, we've approached it, no.
That's it?
Yeah, there's nothing to the north and nothing to the south.
The road, yeah.
Yeah, the bike path.
What if, just kind of, kind of crazy question, but what, what if we go down two floors, does that affect anything, going to the ground?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
We don't, we don't define above or below grade.
Business floor area.
Business floor area, yeah. How much could make one, I mean, obviously, obviously, the wild, hey, you do it around two floors, you made the top floor parking. That wouldn't make sense, because you don't need the parking, it's only going to be a waste of money. So, okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's why we started here first.
That's exactly.
We got too far along.
Questions are real, like I said, questions are easy. Mr. Bradman.
Hello.
Happy, happy comedy.
Happy Valley Comedy, yeah, renting in One Mill Valley, and he asked me to come back with some basic sign designs.
Right.
So, uh, this is general measurements, I got the gentleman at Sunray's Printing working on vinyl.
Okay.
Designs, but this is the sizing of it at least, so we're going to have two of these, one is on the directory hanging signs.
Okay, and we're on, right, all right.
Yep, and one is above our window on the, on the parking lot side of the building.
The colors.
Yep, those will be the colors. And then this is going to be a vinyl on the inside of one of your windows.
Okay.
So you've got twenty-five, twenty-six square feet, and then, no, you're within, you're certainly within the allowed.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we have a deep that?
Sure.
Take a motion though. So, let's see. Check and see if we approved, I think we approved a subject to the sign.
It is supposed to plug that.
Yeah. No, we didn't take a vote.
We didn't take a vote?
No.
Oh, okay.
So. Didn't put your address on one of these, did you? I don't think so. Okay, all right. Six, six, happy D-Day. Okay, um, so I'll make a motion to waive for the site plan approval for Happier Valley Comedy. And that's at One Mill Valley Road?
Yep.
Is that the last construction building?
Yeah, yeah, Sweet Bee, it doesn't matter, so, yeah, that's the last open one.
Um, and, uh, and sign design. So I'll make a motion to waive site plan approval and to approve the sign.
So move.
Second, all motion, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes?
Motion passes from the end. So if you would just.
You got any jokes before you leave, you can tell us.
Name an address there, so we can send you the letter.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Eizer.
That's ours. Two items to see, medium, A and R plant, and then the submission for Mr. Ribzinski at twenty-six Russell Street. So then, site plan, we'll do the A and R first. This is empty land on Aquavita Road, so I can't give you a street address, Bill, I can give you assessors, map numbers if you'd like.
Sure.
Map four A, parcel sixteen, and parcel twenty-one. What this is, is a piece of property that's on one deed, but the road bisects it, and lawyers don't like transferring property like this without having it surveyed and signed off by the planning board. So we've got a piece that goes from the Connecticut River, not quite to Bay Road. And Aquavita Road goes through the middle, more or less. This is one, one deed, and it may say accepting the road, that kind of thing, but anyhow, this is just.
This is in a flood plain, right?
Yes.
This floods all the time.
Yes, and it's just, I, I know, Alex buying this, I don't know what's happening with this.
Where's the river?
Down here. But it's, it's, it can't be built on, because it's in the, I believe it's in the floodway.
I think, I think this, this floods all, I mean, like, not every year, but frequently.
So I'm pretty sure that it is not buildable, it may be, uh, suitable for recreational use, but I think that's it. Started over here, so we don't get confused.
Well, it's good to get confused.
Kind of makes sense. Twenty-six Russell Street, yeah.
What is that?
That's.
The motorcycle gun?
Yes, sir.
This is for the rest of the second story building?
Second story, correct.
July seventeen? Good date, everybody, July seventeen?
What's that for?
The volunteering day, it's the third Tuesday of July.
Yeah. Seventeenth?
Okay, may I? Do we think that we are going to get through the senior center on June nineteenth?
Absolutely, we'll be done, we'll, we'll not be ready for a decision, we'll have to continue with that.
Uh, we've already decided we're not going to meet July.
Third.
Third. So that would make the sixteenth a likely continuation.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, a likely continuation date.
For the senior center.
For the senior center.
Well, this is not going to be a big deal.
Should not be, I can't imagine, nobody showed up the first time, any of the butters, I can't believe they're going to show up again.
We could take this up at the beginning of the meeting, probably take, let's say, half an hour. And the senior center just going to have to get in line and wait? I'm not going to put everybody else off just because of the senior center, that would be unfair of everybody else. He's, how, so he's, he's, he's going by Easy Ride LLC?
That's what it's called, yeah.
Okay.
That'll be the first one I.
So this is, this is what the new?
It's the additional, uh.
Yeah, where's the, I don't want to mistake what he's, what, what he's doing.
Build the, uh. Fifteen hundred ninety-three square feet of building, stay.
Okay, that's what I'm going to. Okay, and that is a?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Yes, sir.
That's twenty-six Russell Street?
Twenty-six Russell, yeah.
And this is. Five hundred fifty. Fifty-four.
Yeah, okay.
Fine, all right, now, I have one question, I have two copies of the drainage study and the associated plans that go with it, the construction details and all that, is that enough?
That's enough.
Okay, good. Because there's enough trees in there.
All, well, this is all of the site plan?
Yeah.
This is the drainage and stuff?
Yes, sir.
Do you, you're going to file one of these for the town clerk, right?
You, you, you want me to file another one?
No, 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 you, you have one of these to file with the town clerk.
I can, I, I don't have any other copy, but I'll get one.
Well, one is all we need.
Okay, good, then I'll take that one.
And these are all mine.
Okay.
Okay, you can make, there's how many here?
There's nine there.
Over there?
Give me one of those, and then I'll have everything I need to.
We also need for the town.
To the town.
We don't have nine.
Okay.
Because we have a problem, we don't have many more than one, because they're all, they're too busy, practically can't get the help.
All right, that's it, thank you very much.
Very good. Come on up?
All right.
Oh, Steve Lewis.
Yes.
We're just going to make a decision on Steve Lewis, right, we have nothing else?
Right.
So.
This will take more than a minute or two.
That was, uh, site plan approval, special permit?
Site plan approval, business use in Aquifer, stormwater management, the three of them. Not that they're serving more than forty thousand square feet, but they're affecting, but potentially forty thousand square feet. We did that just to be safe.
Yeah, yeah.
You had all, everything all cleared out with one in there?
I'm sorry?
All cleared out, so there's no oil there or nothing?
We have, we had an environment engineer came out over the weekend, and he's putting together a report for us now, just to kind of cover our own, our own flaws in the meantime.
Yeah.
Were they able to sniff it, just like I said, or was it more involved in that?
It's, there's a couple, there's two different options that we're using, there's a visual inspection, and there's also a sniffer, but the, it's only able to detect certain things, but I believe it actually will apply in this case, so.
Okay. Yeah, because the fuel we're looking for is oil and gas.
Exactly, it can detect the, it can detect the gas, which case is not going to be visible, and it, and it, as far as the oil, it's a visible thing that you can see as well, so.
Well, that just, that just detects, yeah.
Protect, but just, it covers the bases on the road.
Yeah.
But if he does detect some spillage there now.
Yeah.
What do you do, what do we do? Do you isolate that area?
That's a good question, if there's a spillage there now, then obviously that's something that we have to decide if we want to continue to rent there, knowing that, uh, a year from now, we can be held liable, so, yeah. I have walked the property, I haven't seen anything visibly, nor did he see anything, you know, as far as that, but, um.
Yeah, that whole property had to do a twenty-one E before you started anyways, when they stole it, didn't they?
Right.
So they had to have things of health.
Well, no, because that's not for, that's not necessarily true, there are levels of twenty-one E, and the simplest level, the bank does, and if there's no obvious signs of trouble, that's as far as it goes. And that's basically just a records review, looking whether anything has ever been filed with DEP. If they find something filed with DEP, they go digging deeper, but if something never made it to DEP's file, this is why you're doing a baseline study.
Right.
If something was never reported, for example, and I'm not saying that happened, but if something never came to DEP's attention, there wouldn't be a file on it, and you wouldn't find it on a routine phase one evaluation.
Yeah, there, there wasn't oil still in the house, in the cellar, heating oil, because we did a, what's called an AUL area of, uh, ALU.
Activity and use limitation.
Whatever it is.
That was in the, the whole house?
Yeah, that's well away from there, well aware, away from where the cars are.
Yeah.
Okay.
So also, we don't actually have any plans for this, really, do we? It's, because you, you're not doing anything.
We're not doing anything of the, yeah.
There's no construction involved, or, or anything.
What you see is what you get, yeah.
Are we, are you going to give us the preliminary report so we can have it with the?
I would be happy to, yeah, let me know where I need to send that over.
Just, uh, send it, just send it, is it going to be electronic or a paper?
Uh, I imagine I can get either one.
Electronic would be preferred.
It would be, yeah.
Send it to, have you planning it, have you planning it MA.org?
Planning, yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the website.
Okay, yeah, I'll find it on there, sure.
Okay.
Same place you find my phone number.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the application for, uh, site plan approval, special permit, and business use in Aquifer, based on the finding that Steve Lewis Subaru has obtained a variance to store unregistered, uh, cars on the Pulse Restaurant site. Planning board requires annual testing for oil and gasoline contamination. Otherwise satisfies the site plan review criteria.
Is there a number not to exceed?
I wouldn't have a clue.
As far as the number of cars?
No.
We were discussing doing eighty cars, and I, my next step is to meet with the, uh, SLB board to, yep, to get that handled, so. For the moment, they've granted us our license for the, for the rest of the year, and that we're not.
Is eighty cars going to be enough there for you?
It should, yes, it will.
Because that was.
All right, so I'll add that, I thought you meant for, uh, uh, minimum for results from testing.
No, no, it was, it was, it was a max number of vehicles, well, they want to put on there, this is for new cars only.
Right.
Yes.
New vehicles.
Yep, we do put used cars there during snowstorms for a period of twenty-four hours.
That's, that's different.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, you got to put them someplace.
Yeah, yes.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with a snowstorm issue, but it's the, it's the longer term.
Yeah, I just don't want you guys getting upset, you know, this winter, you see cars there, they go away as fast as the, we can move the snow and get the cars back in the road.
Yeah, right, um, off-site, um, storage of inventory vehicles.
Vehicle to face to the north.
No sales.
No cash deals in the parking lot, yeah.
Away from highway, and how far back?
We haven't measured.
We didn't really, we didn't really put a, put a number on there.
Our parking starts at the north end of that lot, if that, you know, so his parking starts at that end, and we have a number not to exceed as far as the eighty cars as well, but.
Is that a hundred feet from the road?
I think that's a safe number.
Hundred feet off road?
Yeah.
Yeah, put hundred feet, plus or minus.
Yeah.
Okay.
Set them.
Uh.
Let me finish.
No signs?
Yes.
No sign, no sign.
Uh, and no landscaping, no lighting, I'm gonna leave no stars trailers in, just in case you think you might park those over there. Approval is subject to approval of other boards if and as required. Uh, changes of other boards must be approved by the planning board. I have to do a D for compliance, I have to do that. And, uh, also grant a permit for work in the aquifer protection district for, uh, Steve Lewis Subaru. And.
This pertains to suit Steve Lewis Subaru cars only, correct?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
That was.
That's what we're writing it up as.
Being written up as, yes.
Okay. So that is the motion for site plan approval and for, uh, business use in the aquifer.
So.
Motion?
Okay.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you guys very much.
And then we'll do a, that was for.
We need that stormwater management.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve that application, uh, basis that the, uh, provisions of the, uh, bylaw are applicable, project is not exempt, site work is consistent with the provisions, uh, meets the performance standards, and meets the design standards.
That's the motion?
That's the motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. No sir.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
You promising I'll stay away?
Well, that.
You promised to stay away, no.
I've gotten a lot about Tom Paul.
Here we go, now you're up, I'm sorry.
All right. I hope you've all had a chance to look at the definitions.
I brought a whole bunch of stuff in. Yes.
All right. Larry had put this section together.
Yes.
Uh, based on definitions that were in other sections of your bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, most of them are just pulled from those other sections, although there are some highlighted in yellow, and those ones are ones that are either new suggestions from Larry, or, um, they're alternatives, so where you may have a definition, he may have suggested something else based on, uh, either the state legislation or other definitions that he is familiar with. So, um, would you like to go through, just start going through each one?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, excellent.
You got a picture copy?
I do not have extra copies. Um, I.
I printed mine, I don't know, we, we had multiple copies of this, yours and Cindy's.
Yeah, um, yeah, I left mine as a printer at the office.
Shoot. Should've just brought some extras.
I have an extra, like, sincerely, that one.
So, where a definition has been pulled from another section of the bylaw?
Yep.
Are we proposing to remove it from that section?
Yes.
Okay.
Put it in here.
Okay.
Unless there's some reason not to, like, there might be something, for example, we were talking about, I was asking him about the definition here of, about open space today, um, because it's talking about open space on a specific lot. And defining it that way, and I was asking him about what about related to an open space subdivision, if that's something you have in your regulations. So he said that that would be, that would be in that section, open space related to that specific regulation, so sometimes there may be some still within the regulation, but most of them are in this one section.
So, so, once we get these definitions ironed out?
Yeah.
We'll have to go through and write up a amendment and say, okay, this is the new definition section, whatever it's going to be, and then the different sections of the bylaw, these are being removed.
Yes, and Larry has that somewhere already as well, in our file.
Great, okay, okay.
Yep, okay, so, let's see.
The one I've got is five-two-seventeen, that's the latest one?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, it is.
Okay, under accessory apartment.
Accessory apartment, okay, so that's the first new highlighted one, yep.
It said a second dwelling unit either, either in or added to an existing single-family detached dwelling. What does that mean? That the detached, that the accessory apartment can be detached from the main building? That's the way I read it.
Either in or added to an existing single-family detached dwelling. No, um, to me, that says that it is either within a detached single-family dwelling unit or added to that unit.
What's a single-family detached dwelling?
It should be an attached or.
No.
What's, what's a single-family detached, I don't wanna talk, I want her to answer the question because they know.
A single-family detached dwelling unit would be an individual, single-family home, as opposed to an attached unit, which would probably be, uh, condominium. Attached.
You mean, I live in a detached building?
Yes.
Yes.
I've never knew that before.
Detached to what?
That, this is, this is, this is what I'm, this is confusing to me.
From anything else? Okay, a lot of, this is pretty normal.
I understand that. I, I, I want to make sure that we are clear on it, and the building inspector is clear on it, that this doesn't mean that the accessory apartment can be detached from the main building.
No.
Detached suggests that it's detached from something.
If it said that the unit, the second dwelling unit was detached, it doesn't say that, it says a second dwelling unit either added to, in or added to an existing, single-family detached dwelling.
Detached from what?
From anything else.
Why can't we just take that detached?
No, a detached.
Well, you can, um, but then it would say, yeah.
We only permit single-family dwellings.
Okay, you have no condos or.
No, we not only buy super special permits.
Super special, okay.
Okay?
All right.
The, the, our zoning bylaw specifically written that one single-family dwelling per lot.
Okay, okay, then that probably makes sense for you.
So we could say that the second dwelling unit either in?
Or added to.
An existing, single-family dwelling, it takes the word detached out.
Yes.
Added or attached to. Or, within or attached to.
Within or added to. Should we, so we, should we say we attached to instead of added?
I would say attached to would be.
So we take, we replace the word added with attached.
Okay.
That's all, okay, good.
Okay.
Accessory building, that's fine. Agriculture, that's fine, no.
Okay, no, yeah.
You've got agriculture listed twice.
Okay.
And I'm assuming, the first one gives you a whole bunch of words. The second one is defined by M. Master Knowles, chapter one-twenty-eight, section eight, one A. I would think that's the one we want to use.
That's the recommendation, yes.
And take out the non-highlighted one.
Correct, correct, then, then it just refers directly to the statute, and then if any changes in the statute, you're all set.
That's right, okay, I, I, that's what I thought it meant, but I wanted to make sure.
Okay, yep.
Alteration is fine, oh, you got two for alteration.
Okay, so this is just a little more specific.
So the yellow, the highlighted one is a more succinct definition.
Has more, some more information, yes.
Okay, so we take out the?
The first one.
The first one, that's all, okay. Now, bread and beck, bread and breakfast.
Can we just go with the agricultural one in the next town to our north, uh, the lumbering operation performed by a farmer? Farmer was to set up a sawmill. Loud.
Right, so four-street line lumbering operations.
Logging is defined under agriculture law.
But it was denied under their interpretation of that in some way.
Yeah.
Well, logging and lumbering and.
A sawmill.
Sawmill, they're part of, I suppose they could work together, like, they could, they could go together, but probably shouldn't. So.
Sawmill's a form of manufacturing.
Would be a different.
Yeah.
A lumbering operation is.
Yeah, the, I asked, I asked Joel Bar this specific question a couple of years ago, and return, we, we, referring more to sawmilling as opposed to lumbering.
Right.
And he said specifically that if the farmer is using the sawmill for his own lumber on his own property, it's considered an agricultural operation.
Like a portable bandsaw.
But if you are purchasing from me.
Others.
Others, and you're bringing it to your property and cutting it up, that is not considered a saw, a agricultural sawmill operation.
That should be spelled out in there, so there's no mistake.
While performed by a farmer.
For own use.
For own use.
Right, is, is one thing, but the process for others, that don't belong in that.
So for own use, yeah.
So this is probably, uh, you know, straight from the statute and.
Well, could you look that?
I can look that up, absolutely.
Could, could you look that, if that is direct to statute, and if we could or could not put something in there, just what we just, we talked to about with the role of use.
Okay.
Okay.
Just so it's clarified.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Absolutely agree. We want this, this is gonna be an evergreen document. We don't want the first one to be a disaster either.
That's right.
We want to, we wanna make some improvements. Alteration, we're all set, animal livestock feed, attic. Now, we got bread, bed and breakfast listed, one, two, three, four, four times.
Okay, so these must've come out, they must all be a little different, and they must've come out of your existing regulations.
Cause we do, I believe our bed and breakfast facilities are limited to a maximum number.
So the establishment has four to six units.
Believe so, but it's.
Facility is general. Home is three or fewer, so that's smaller, and a bed and breakfast unit is going to be the specific unit within each.
Section twenty-two.
Yeah.
So.
I don't believe we allow.
Bed and breakfast establishment is four to six units.
That's what it has in here, yeah.
A bed and breakfast facility is either an establishment or a home. An establishment is four to six units, a home is, um, three or fewer.
That's exactly what this has.
And also, uh.
Okay, this is, that is taken right out of our definition, but when people have come in, I think.
You limit to, yeah?
We've never allowed more than six. Okay, so this, that, the definitions are right in our, taken right out of our, our, our own, our own section, okay, that's fine.
Good.
All right.
Billboard?
Yeah, you could've highlighted, but you don't give any out to this.
That was probably just a new one, because there wasn't any definition in here.
Okay.
Assigning to advertises products or services not sold or provided, I would promise.
Yeah, we, we don't allow billboards, and we're trying to get rid of the ones we have where we can't.
Yeah, Larry was going to say there was a provision for removing billboards, uh, he said, I'll bring that up to you later, just, that's for, you know, FYI, not necessarily within the definition.
Okay.
Yeah, but all the billboards now that are replaced are grandfathered in, right?
Right, but they were.
He said, that was my question, and he said, even with that provision, there is a sunset clause that can be put in.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll check with my math.
That would be.
After the fact?
Yeah. Yeah, it, it, it's like a long shot, but it, and it takes a long time, and it's not easy, but it can be done, I think is kind of what he said.
Mm-hmm, okay.
All right, building, um, the only question I've got, a building is any combination of materials, whether portable or fixed, having a roof, to form a structure for the shelter of persons, animals, or property. The word building shall be construed where the context requires, as though followed by the words, or parts, or parts thereof. A port is to be considered a part of a building when considering setbacks. What about, does that mean it doesn't need walls? If it's a roof, if it has a roof, it's considered a building?
And, and that sounds like it, so.
I just always thought a roof is a lean-to.
Well, this, this doesn't say anything about walls, and that's one of, that's the question I'm asking.
All right, that's a good question. I, this is probably what is currently in your regulations.
And it might very well be.
Um, and I'm not sure, would, you might want a building to include a large structure that would just have a roof on it.
Exterior walls. Including exterior walls.
Well, you take.
It don't have to be a foundation, cause it could be a pole board.
Take something like the Young Men's Club Pavilion, before they put doors on it, that, that's definitely a building, but it doesn't have walls.
Right.
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 Cause structure is defined in this, and I'm assuming he pulled that out of probably the building code.
You don't, let's see, is that a new one?
No, it's, it's non, non-highlighted.
Oh, I see, so you, and you don't think that was anyone else?
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is a building the same as a structure.
I don't think so.
No.
Swimming pool could be a structure. Like what Bill said about the Young Men's Club, that's a pavilion, that's not. A pavilion is open, just with a roof.
Okay.
Or the gazebo they're talking about for Sotarka Park.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I just would like to be a bit more clear, that if it doesn't need to have walls, we make some kind of a comment in there that with or without walls.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Just, just to be more clear, that's all. That's, and I'm not, I'm not questioning the definition that's there.
Yeah.
I just had a question about the walls, and a building and a structure, okay, they're different, that's fine too.
So a pavilion's a structure.
Oh, right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we have accessory building defined for, before building accessory, yeah, we have accessory building. Okay, that's fine, so that's just, that's just, okay. A building detached, a building having open space on all sides.
Right, and building attached, so even though you say you don't have any condos or anything now, there could.
We have commercial properties.
We have commercials, commercials can be condos, a, a garage, a detached, a detached garage, I guess detached building.
Right.
Okay, I understand that one, I have no problem with that. Detached principal structure, exactly what is determined, building lot, see, see definition, okay, I'm good with everything on that page. My next comment is on page four. Dwelling.
Okay, you go with common driveway, that was another new one.
Oh, okay.
Common driveway?
Common driveway. Okay. Okay, yeah, that's right, okay, yeah, that's a good one, yes, that's fine. I'm, I'm just making the, the comment that I have no questions on.
Okay.
Con- common driveway, what is that, is that for the...
In other words, when two, two houses or more, hey, share, share the same driveway.
In, in a commercial, is, can be more.
In a commercial or in a residential, a residential area can, can do it too.
But a commercial is different than using a common driveway, isn't it? They can exceed more than three homes.
Yes, 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 yeah. Uh, let's see.
Dwelling.
Dwelling, any building that contains one or two dwelling units. And I had a question on, why are we saying two dwelling units, because we only allow one dwelling per lot.
Okay, so that, the first one is the one that was in your regulations.
Okay.
And Larry suggested the second one. So maybe you would prefer that one. Private or publicly owned permanent structure that are private for families. Not a motel, guest house.
Okay, so a pro, a dwelling is defined as a privately or publicly owned permanent structure for occupancy by families. The term "one family, two family, or multifamily, multi-family dwelling" shall not include motel, guest house, hospital, membership, club, trailer, or dormitory.
So just skip the two family, multifamily ones.
Well, it's not saying that a multifamily dwelling is permitted.
Well, somebody's gonna interpret it that way.
Well, you can take a, a whole house and make it multi-family, right?
Correct.
Yes. So why can't you allow that as a note?
And I think we actually do have multifamily dwellings in, contemplate that the senior housing might be multifamily dwellings. So...
Okay, yeah, okay.
So we should use that second one?
Take the se, yeah, use the second one.
First one out.
First one's out, okay. Under dwelling detached and dwelling one family, I, the only question I have is, is a standalone residential structure, should we put permanent structure? Would that be better?
Why, what else would you put? What, what, they don't do more temporary structures, eh?
Well, we don't want, we don't want a, a trailer to be construed as a dwelling.
Uh, we could do that.
That's after buildings.
I think there is a definition for a trailer and for a mobile home later on that should clarify.
Okay, so we, so we don't, so we don't need permanent, yeah, okay.
All right, same thing for those, all right.
These are okay, encroachment, enforcement officer.
Under encroachment, I just got a question that it seems too brief. Fill, construction, fill, construction of new structures, substantial improvement to existing truck structures or other development. That does what?
Yeah, you're right.
What does it, what, what does the fill, construction, or substantial improvement affect? It seemed like something...
Yeah, why don't I look at that one a little bit more?
Okay, that means any fill, any construction or substantial improvement is encroachment. It seemed like there should, seemed like something was truncated on there.
Okay, yep, I'll look at that.
Enforcement officer, what kind of enforcement officer, zoning, building?
Inspector of Buildings of the Town of Hadley.
Zoning enforcement.
Zoning enforcement officers. I believe that should be zoning enforcement, but I'm not, that's why I wanna make you, you know...
Well, doesn't that all fall under the building, the building commission?
Yes, but if you just say enforcement officer, enforcement of what, the building code or the, or the zoning code?
Yeah, he probably thought, cause it was in the zoning right.
I understand, it just, I just wanted to...
That's fine.
Okay. Um, everything is good.
Fence.
What?
Fence.
Yes.
The last line, fences, fences are considered accessory structures for the purpose of this bylaw.
What is?
A fence, is it?
Well, that's what it says.
That's what it must say in your regulations currently.
A fence is considered a building?
I, I don't believe all of the definitions that he has here are in our zoning bylaw. I believe some of them, he added because we don't have the definition.
And, but I think all those ones he highlighted in yellow.
How can you call a fence?
Thirty-five years ago, a fence was one of the most cantankerous subjects to discuss, because a farmer putting a fence up is for cattle, is one thing.
Yeah.
And you putting a fence up, where your neighbor may be picked off at you, is a different category.
Well, Joe, a fence is a fence, a building is a building.
That's, that's why accessory structures would mean, it doesn't mean it has to be setbacked, has a structure from a side yard.
It's not a fence to be put right on a property.
Except I guess you're accessory structure, yeah, I, I would have to look at your regulations.
You can't put buildings on property.
Um, but...
A fence should not be considered an accessory structure.
No, because we do have this, uh, section five point two, "No accessory building or structure except for a sign shall be located within the required front yard area."
Yeah.
Or in any side area nearer to the side lot than fifteen feet.
But fence should be included in there.
And the fences, how, yeah. Yes, cause you want, sometimes you want the fence along the front, along the road, to keep, you don't want it set fifty feet back from the road. John, you ought to be an expert on fences, wasn't there a question, your property versus the, uh, the trucking company that was going in?
Wasn't there a question on your land?
No, was it a height of a fence? No, the state regulations...
They said si, over six foot is a spike fence.
Okay.
You gotta get a permit, anything under that, it's allowable.
So that's state regulations.
I, I still believe some of the definitions that aren't highlighted do not appear in our zoning bylaw. And...
I wonder if they could be in other places in your regulations that, I don't know.
Joe, I, I think that...
Or present, but I'll, I'll check with him on that, that's for sure.
I think that fences should be defined in here.
I, I agree they should be defined.
Right?
But I don't believe...
Define them.
Because... Well, there are two parts to it. We have to keep in mind, if we just, we can't just define it if it doesn't tie into something. That's correct, we never did be, we were never able to come to an agreement on what a fence is and where it should be located. Because the farmers had one opinion, neighbors had another opinion. And even if we can get, even if we can settle on a definition of a fence, having a definition of a fence means nothing if there isn't a bylaw that says that, that governs fences. Good point, yeah, so what do we do?
Could you put a fence by permit only?
No, that'd be ridiculous. That means every fence that somebody wanted to put up.
Yeah, depend on that.
It would be, it would be a big, it would be a headache for everybody involved.
Yep, that's another one I can look at.
I don't ever remember seeing the words in our bylaw, "Fences are considered accessory structures for the purpose of this bylaw." I'm not saying it's not in there, I just can't think of where I, where I've seen it.
But it shouldn't.
I agree it shouldn't be an accessory, it should not be an accessory structure, cause then it's gotta meet setback, and that's, that's ridiculous. So we'll just put a, we'll just put a question mark next to fence.
I don't look into that anymore.
Gross floor area is fine.
No, what is that, gross area is fine?
Gross floor, gross floor area. Okay. Uh, my stage is not quite fine. It says excluding covered walkways, open-roofed, over areas, porches, and similar spaces. Pipe trenches, yes, exterior terraces? No, exterior terraces should be part of the gross floor area. Because restaurants, I, I know this definition is not in our bylaw.
In fact, it is contrary to our bylaw.
Right.
Okay.
Exterior terraces must be considered part of the, uh...
Square footage.
For square footage. Open-roofed, over areas, this one needs a lot of work. Because if you refer to a house, it's one thing, if you refer to a business, it's another. The problem we have with up-the-road escalon is because it's an open-roofed area and it's an exterior terrace, they use it for seating, and that's why there's not enough parking on the property. And our site plan approval specifically includes these areas now as part of the gross floor area.
Section, it's in the parking definition, so take a look at section five point four point one.
Five point four.
So floor areas defined as gross square footage undercover as well as outdoor storage, outdoor display, outdoor seating, outdoor food service, and any other outdoor facilities related to the use.
Okay.
Yeah. That was one of those prime examples, the camel's nose is in the tent, as Jim mentioned. Oh, we just wanted to have summer serving cocktails, and they enclosed it.
No, that won't happen.
Yeah, so then they doubled their, not quite doubled their capacity, but they didn't have enough parking.
Well, between the open porch and then the open floor area, they doubled.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, okay.
Okay.
Getting back to, all right, so we're on page six. Grade is fine, greenhouse is fine, groundwater.
Group facilities, those no ones are fine.
Um, yeah, as far as I couldn't find anything that I disagreed with greatly on that. Um, hazardous waste. Do you want, I'm just looking at this now. regulates the Mass Hazardous Waste Management Act. Check and see if Mass General Law is chapter, um, two-one-C. I know hazardous waste is defined under two fifteen, but I'm not sure if that's CFR or CMR fifteen, I think it's CMR two fifteen.
Yeah, it would be CMR.
Okay, so just make sure that the, check fif, two fifteen versus twenty-one, I know that two fifteen is the one that actually defines hazardous waste. Uh, chemicals.
All right.
Okay, um, it ha, it actually, more than hazardous, like, it defines basically, uh, chemicals that are qualified under the VSQ, very small quantity, large quantity, and small quantity generators. Okay, no, two fifteen is the number that comes to my mind.
Those are all CMR though, right?
I believe there's, I believe it's CMR two fifteen, and there's, God, those books are, last time I printed one out, it was about three inches thick, it's probably bigger than that now. You don't wanna print it out, but it is extremely involved. Height is okay, home business is okay. Oh, wait a minute, under home business, the very last sentence, "Shall require a special permit issued by the planning board and shall comply with all the following conditions."
Oh.
What conditions? I believe, I think they copied too much out of the, cut and pasted too much.
Yeah.
What, a, a home business, there's always a conditions attached to it, right?
No, 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 but it's in the definition, you don't put the, you don't put that, you don't simply don't put that, that sentence. I think they copied something out of the, out of
Yep.
the, uh, our home business and didn't delete that, that sentence.
You're right.
Under home occupation, um, you've got, is carried out by the occupants of the building and not in any manner changing the residential character of the building. I believe is carried out by the occupants of the building and has no other employees, should be in, in, uh, put in right after, has what?
And has no other employees?
Right, is carried on by the occupants of the building and has no other employees, has no other employees, and it's not in any manner changing the residential character of the building for home occupation.
Okay.
Home business has employees.
In the la, last line, same thing.
Under home office, no, addition following conditions.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, home occupation is electrician or plumber that works out of his house, no, no employees on the site.
Right, yeah. Hospital, hotel, yes, impervious surface. Hotel, should we have any way of, uh, limiting the number of days, for example, homewood suites, uh, coming in, in the town, and can they rent it by the year? A semester?
For what?
I guess if somebody can afford it.
Yeah.
That's expensive, no matter how you slice it.
What's that?
Renting homewood suites for staying in a suite for like two or three months.
Yeah, that's right. It's a big box already.
Yeah, but they're not gonna, that's a good question.
I, I was talking to Lax about that, and I didn't go tell you too, that doesn't happen like that.
They're basically too expensive.
Right.
Well, that, the one next to Zoe's Restaurant, when it did have some difficult time, was turned in, turned into apartments.
That was before it became what it is today.
Correct.
Now that they're all associated with a national chains and they're, they're, the quality of the rooms has greatly improved.
Well, they could lose the national chain qualifications if they decided not to update their facilities and then turn it into apartments.
Yeah, but apartments are not allowed.
That's right, so what we're saying is that if a motel morphs into apartments because somebody decides not to keep it up.
It makes no difference, apartments are not allowed, you can't just convert something into an apartment.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's, I mean, that's something that, I don't think we should put wording into our zoning bylaws
Okay.
to look for super worst-case scenarios, because there is enough checks and balances with
I agree, yeah.
with a zoning enforcement officer doing the job that should prevent that.
Okay.
Okay, I don't disagree with you that it could be a concern, I'm, I'm not...
No, we're gonna have some flexibility, right?
Yeah. Impervious surface. Any surface that restricts natural rainwater penetration, infiltration, and/or natural groundwater recharge. This includes rooftops, pavements, and any, any types of concrete, asphalt, bituminous concrete, any type, so-called TRG gravel, stone, or any type or size brick or other surface that restricts or is designed to restrict natural rainwater. TRG gravel and stone are not an impervious surface by any stretch of the imagination.
Hartpads. Would it, that's ground-up reclaimed blackout, they call that hartbat.
That's right, that's different, that's not TRG.
Right.
That's not, gravel and stone are certainly not, um, what you could call it, impervious.
Okay.
Um, brick, hmm...
Oh, wasn't that part of the issue we just had with, with Steve Lewis Subaru?
And those are not, he's got TRG out there and trap rock, and they all have said, including the engineers, that is not impervious. That's exactly what I'm saying back there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we wanna take out TRG gravel and stone. Um, by two, by two minutes concrete, it says any type, so that would include the ground-up stuff that John just mentioned.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay.
Um, brick? Hmm, is brick impervious?
How can it be?
Yeah, brick is, but between...
Brick is impervious, but what about the surfaces between?
Between it, exactly, correct.
Brick is not impervious. Brick is not impervious. Or any other surface that restricts or is designated to restrict natural rainwater, I can live with the last sentence.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna take out TRG gravel, stone, and any size, and brick, okay?
And brick, or you want to take out?
Take out brick, cause brick is, brick itself, but what about the spaces between a brick, if they don't
mortar them?
If they don't mortar them, and most places don't, they just lay them in with dirt around them and the oil and water can penetrate the crevices.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, junk.
Junk, in conflict with our vote, our town bylaw.
This is, this definition?
Well, they say any rusted... Well, they say any rusted machinery.
The farmers would be in big trouble.
I, well, they are now because that bylaw passed, but that's a general bylaw and not a zoning bylaw. So the question is, do we even get into it? That's a good point, that's where I was going.
So you just had a new regulation?
Yeah, there was a whole, a whole bylaw just passed at town meeting on, I forget what it was, what was it called? What was it called?
Nuisance.
Nuisance something or other.
Nuisance uses.
It's called exten- extension of amorous mess.
Uh.
Right.
I would just put a question mark for the time being.
Yeah.
But we have junk yards, we do have junk yards, yes.
We don't, we don't define junk.
A junk yard only can be in, uh,
Industrial.
industrial zone, and where's the industrial zone?
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't address junk in anything in our bylaw right now that I'm aware of, so that's a good point.
But since we do have a junk yard, we, since we do address junk yards, we do need a definition.
For junk, yeah, we gotta try, we need a definition of a junk yard, not junk.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Somebody can call your stuff your car, you can call that a junk.
Right, okay, so we need a definition for junk yard.
You can call those extractors junk.
Sometimes they are. Find out tomorrow morning, if it starts at all. Call it junk.
Next one, unlimited manufacturing, I'm not quite sure about this one. Any manufacturing activity related to research uses, where did, wh- wh- where did the research uses come in?
Don't they do that on that park on?
Yes.
That's a research park.
I, I don't, I agree with that, but why, why is limited manufacturing only related to research?
That's, well.
I assumed that was what was in the regulations, but wait, I'd have to look at that.
Well, we did have to change, remember when the research was coming into what was, once upon a time called the Dead Mall, Mountain Farms Mall? And there were some research facilities wanted to come in and it was not included in our business section, but it was in the industrial section.
Limited manufacturing, limited, limited manufacturing.
Yeah.
We have manufacturing or industrial use.
Right.
Which is allowed only in the industrial district.
Okay.
We don't address limited manufacturing any place in our zoning bylaw that I'm aware of.
All right, I'll look at this then and some more detail too.
And how would manufacturing be defined?
That's what I'm looking for.
I mean, one of them was, they were manufacturing
Manufacturing is not defined.
Measuring dust particles.
It's not, huh?
It's not.
Interesting, and that's what you have in there?
Yeah, we, we allow manufacturing, but we don't define it, but we define limited manufacturing.
Right, so maybe we should have manufacturing instead?
Yeah, we need a definition for manufacturing. Now, while we're in there, okay, now this, yes, that's fine. Lot, that's good, lot, okay, we have two here.
Then the manufacturing is defined where it's located, right?
Yes. Yeah, we don't even have definition.
Two for lot, right.
Yeah, the yellow one is a much better definition.
Okay, good. And the two for lot area as well, which you'll see he, uh, put a lot area minimum below, which I think is designed to just sort of clarify, you had it sort of combined previously.
Wait, wait a minute. What happened to, uh, okay. Wait a minute, lot area, what happened to all the upland and all the rest of the stuff?
So, took it out of there and is that, so I thought that this definition below is land, was addressing that.
No.
Shall not be counted, shall not be counted toward the minimum lot area, land under permanent water, land boarding wetlands, land without a gridway.
No.
I guess it is different, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. So you wanna make sure that?
The Conservation Commission was the one that wanted the lot area defined back in nineteen eighty-eight. Alexandra Dawson was extremely specific about this particular item, I remember that for sure, Joe in Killdo.
So we should probably keep it unless there's
You know, I mean, ti- Lot area minimum seems to be, why do we need that?
Why, why won't you have a, a minimum size of a lot?
We do. But this excludes so much that I know, it, it's like, I could see calling it lot area buildable. But if somebody has all this land, that's not considered their lot?
Why don't you just define it as a buildable lot?
That's my point, maybe we should call it lot area minimum buildable, something like that, add that word in there, okay? Because to say, I'm not trying to be wise here, but if it's a lot area minimum, does that mean if somebody comes in and includes all of this stuff and they wanna sell a lot
Right.
just for farming?
Right.
It's not a lot?
Right.
Okay?
It's a good point.
Um, so.
Add buildable.
Yeah. Okay, here we go, building, lot corner.
Can't you sell a lot that's not e- that you don't wanna build on it? And it doesn't meet the, the measurements, it could be used for another purpose?
Yes, that's what lot area would be, yeah.
Yep.
So we take out the highlighted lot area and use the one above it. Okay, lot corner. Yeah, that's good, lot depth.
The, uh, the lot corner, Jim, yep, the yard adjacent to each street will be considered front yard. Were we picking out, one would be a front yard, uh, one could be a side yard, once upon a time, or is that in the?
No, we, we talked about it, but.
We never did anything about it.
Okay.
Does a corner lot have any advantage or disadvantage over a lot frontage?
It has a disadvantage because
Or it can take and take either one, the side lot, frontage, or the
Well, that's what we were, the way, the way it reads, in cases, in case of corner lots, the front yard depth
shall be observed from all bordering streets.
That was very contentious once upon a time, before even I got on the planning board and that went through the legal muster with Attorney Padova, I think.
So hardly determined which one was, what, the one is greater becomes the frontage?
They're both, they're both, they're both front lots.
Both foot, yeah.
So you gotta observe fifty foot from both lots. Many develop, many people that, some that
Well, you mean if, you got the first thing, the corner of East Street there.
Yes.
His frontage is on Route nine.
Right.
But also his frontage is on East Street?
Correct. So he's gonna be fifty, he's gonna be fifty foot back from East Street and fifty foot back from Russell Street.
Otherwise it's fifteen feet on the side?
Yes, and what happens sometimes, I mean, most corner lots develop a raise, so it's, it's, it's a moot point in many cases. But the, uh, they'll go for a zoning variance sometimes on them. However, if somebody has a frontage today and they put a new street in, now the new street is considered a side yard, side yard fifteen foot.
Okay.
That's right.
It even, it even says
Let me give you an example, the house across, uh, Diggers there. That house is gonna be knocked down someday because it's for sale.
Yeah.
Now, what is the frontage in the, they're both, the frontage is on Route nine and East Street?
No, okay, two things, frontage and front yard setback.
Yes.
You can have frontage on, you only need frontage on one street. You need your hundred and seventy-five feet on one street. Doesn't matter how far, how much frontage you have on the other street. But you have to have a fifty foot setback from both streets.
But an existing lot?
Yes.
New construction on an existing lot.
Yeah, for, for an existing lot, like I said, his grandfather, if you add a new house onto it, if they tear that house down and put a new house up completely, then it needs to be fifty foot from East Street and Route nine.
Then there's not enough land.
They, but they only have fifty foot depth off of Russell Street.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
So, but that's a prime candidate for a variance, that falls within the definition of a variance.
Right, because that's existing.
Well, or that it's a harsh, it's unusual shape or topography
Yeah.
that's not shared with other lots in the neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, all right.
All right.
Lot depth, the mean horizontal distance measured
Oh, boy, I can't look anymore.
Okay.
By way of history, this used to be called the Zagradic Square. That's
It did?
That's many years ago, people used to have various
That's lot layout.
Lot configurations, such that you could not even get a house on the lot, so they would all have to go for variances. So that's when I came up with the idea, you've gotta fit a square in there so you can fit a house in there.
Yes.
And
Yeah, good.
Okay, lot frontage is good.
Uh, should we take out frontage then? Is it still, I guess frontage is still.
Yeah, that's, I think that's the square.
Interior layout.
Okay, I, okay, going back to lot, lot frontage.
Okay.
In the case of a subdivision lot, approved under subdivision control law, a lot frontage requirement may be reduced by not more than twenty percent for lots situated around the cul-de-sac, provided they are part of a plan, sure enough, a subdivision plan, the mineral lot depth will be achieved from the front of the principal structure. What does that mean, they can reduce the frontage by twenty percent?
If you're, now, houses are sitting around the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
They wouldn't need as much frontage, they would need, they could have twenty percent less than is allowed.
Because it goes around? Even if you took the arc of the cer- like
We measured the whole circle, the arc and the circle.
Yeah, you measure the arc of the circle, like, let's say we got two hundred feet of frontage. So you measure two hundred feet of circumference.
Right, you could do that.
That's the way we do it today.
Okay.
We don't wanna reduce it by twenty percent.
Okay.
You don't measure in a straight line.
Right, we don't measure in a straight line in the cul-de-sac, I, I think what they're talking about is like a straight line.
Okay.
I believe as opposed to a cir- a circumference line. But it's not clear, but we don't, we, we use the circumference, partial circumference.
Okay.
Okay, so if you got, let's say you got six hundred foot circumference of a circle, they would need one third of the circle. And a two hundred foot, okay, so we're gonna take out the entire thing and, and a control.
That whole section?
Right. In the case of subdivision, lot interior, lot layout. In addition to the minimum lot area depth, width, and frontage requirements, lots laid out, lots shall be laid out in such a manner that a square with a size equal to the minimum frontage requirement for the zoning district in which it is located can be placed within a lot with at least one point of the square lying at front lot line. That would be
So that's a change, that's
That's a major change, if we got a two hundred foot zoning,
So it has
that's, that's a two hundred foot square as opposed to a one fifty foot square.
So lot layout and depth should be combined into one and it should include one fifty by one fifty.
Yeah, so that lot layout, you, you can combine what you want, but, but it basically should be read, in addition to the minimum lot area depth, width, and frontage requirements, lots shall be laid out in such a manner that a square one hundred and fifty by one fifty as to that, it, it's in our zoning bylaw.
Okay.
So you're gonna take out, from that point on, with the size equal, all the rest of that is out. Cause we don't want a two hundred fifty, we need two hundred or a hundred and, or a hundred and seventy-five foot square, we wanna stay with the one fifty. Cause we find out that that one fifty square is huge in a lot of lots.
Okay.
We have, we have some two hundred foot lots that sometimes it barely fits.
Okay, wow, yeah.
Okay, and using that one fifty square, when you put it onto, maybe the circumference of the cul-de-sac, it takes care of probably, it probably addresses your
That other issue.
The other issue.
Yeah, okay. All right, so it should just be a square one hundred fifty.
By one fifty fifty, yes.
Okay.
So should you combine lot depth and lot layout as one?
Or lot layout and lot frontage might be one. You can decide what's the ba- or just leave it as that, whichever
How would this?
Or lot area.
Yeah, you could leave lot depth in, the one fifty is
You gotta, you gotta frontage in there, right?
It's got frontage.
You've got frontage, so lot layout might be combined with lot area. Well, or you could, I know, you can need, just leave it a lot later, there's a separate line in the zoning right now.
The lot layout is, is that for subdivision, did you talk about that?
The what?
That's it for subdivision, right?
Any lot, or lot area?
Yeah.
And for approval not required.
And for approval not required.
Be buildable.
A lot related definitions.
Yeah, that's good, lot width. Okay, under lot width.
That's bills.
Well, that has the twenty percent reduction.
And, and under lot width, you take out the last sentence, in the case of the cul-de-sac, with twenty percent reduction.
Okay.
See, I did read this.
Yeah, so.
Good, I'm glad.
But that
Cause you know it way better than me.
Turns back into minimum. So we got into a, um,
Yeah, lot width is exactly what you
Yeah.
You take out that last sentence, exactly what you wanted there.
Okay, yeah, that, that was just where we got into the, at some point, the, as we were changing frontage and width, we ended up leaving width at a hundred and fifty feet for everything, even though the frontage went up to larger amounts.
Right.
And I don't remember if there was a rationale for doing that.
Yeah, the lots on, uh, Harts, Hartsburg.
Well, that, I mean, that was why we adopted the, the
Which one, Ranall?
No, 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 it was, uh,
Hartsburg School.
It's, uh, between the Hartsburg School and the Wests, they laid out some lots. They were off, they're actually accessed through the Hartsburg driveway. That was before we had a common driveway by law and before we had a lot width by law. So there are these things that look like snakes. But they start off with a hundred and fifty foot square at the street and then they go up in a long, narrow line to weigh out back. Um, so we got rid of that, but the, the other question here is just, I suppose, it's not a huge deviation, but for example, in the Aqua for Protection District, you have to have two hundred feet of frontage. But the lot could still narrow down like a piece of pie.
To one fifty.
To one fifty, where the, where the structure is.
Well, I thought the lot had to be just forty feet.
But don't we define that differently in the bylaw someplace, but you put a thing in, we, we, we amended it someplace
Right.
that's over.
The overall square footage is greater, right, and that for recharge.
As, as opposed to minimum lot width, like the minimum lot frontage.
Okay, that was, uh,
Do we have lot frontage or a lot front? Oh, lot frontage, yeah, on the previous
The other one was, uh, like, what's the street? On Route forty-seven, just a little south of Laurel Drive, that is to the west. It's got five or six houses.
The where?
In Laurel Drive, this goes towards South Valley, probably...
Right on the right of the street.
On the right-hand side.
Yeah, that's, that's a common driveway.
For here.
Yes.
At no point...
Okay, no point, front lot line near the principal structure. Should a lot have width?
That's Burkings project, wasn't it?
So, it's lot width or is it frontage width? Lot width?
It is, uh, should I have a lot width less than the minimum lot width? So, it's, it's width, not frontage.
Okay, so that, so this is consistent with what that says?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
There's mobile home.
Mobile home.
A new suggestion.
Yeah, mobile home, built on a chassis and containing complete electrical plumbing and sanitary facilities designed to be installed on a temporary or permanent foundation for permanent living quarters. But this one says something says residential living unit, this something, dwelling unit, so that's really the only change.
Is that, is that on Pylons Stoke or not?
Permanent foundation.
A temporary.
Or temporary.
Yeah.
A temporary, yeah, could be temporary.
Alright.
But that's, but that's... Yeah, the only difference is the dwelling unit versus a residential living unit.
Right, so...
But that's, that's consistent with what we have today. Okay.
Okay, good.
Lot tile municipal uses. Okay. Open space. What's this diagram?
Oh, that just highlights the, he asked me, the diagram was, um, the different lot lines, side yards, you know, setbacks, those things. So, follows that section of definitions and just kind of helps to clarify it. Lot frontage is, so if anybody has questions.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's okay.
Yeah. Okay, under parking space. Your parking area is ten foot, I mean, nine foot by twenty-one. We use ten by twenty in TDR.
Under parking space.
Why, why so big?
That was just the number we used.
Okay, so what do you use, say?
Ten by twenty.
Ten by twenty.
But all the standards are eight by twenty.
Nine by, nine by twenty-one is, it's more of a standard.
But that's what you use?
Well...
The ten by twenty.
That's what we, we use nine by ten by twenty, and we use that as a round figure for TDR.
Okay.
It's easier to figure the numbers.
Yeah, exactly, that was easier to figure. Um, I mean, it's not a huge difference.
Well, some of them are ten, because for example, Stop and Shop has the dual lines there, so...
Eight, eight, eight. The, the nine by twenty-one is, is more of a standard than what we've seen recently. An eleven-square feet difference. But we don't define parking space in our zoning by law. The only place we define parking space in the zoning, well, actually, the only place we define parking space in the zoning by law is TDR.
Okay, then it should match that.
So, it should, it should be ten by twenty, yes. Hundred, two-hundred square feet.
So, that means they're gonna pay more for TDR?
No.
Why, if you require more parking, they're gonna buy?
We don't know. They're not buying parking spaces.
They're buying...
They're buying square feet.
Right, so the more square feet, more...
So, if we're, if they're, if they're buying, if they're buying two thousand square feet, they might be able to fit an extra... They'll almost be able to fit an extra parking space in it. They can fit eleven cars as opposed to ten cars. But that's fine, because they're buying space, not the number of spaces.
And you don't wanna have parking space size defined for any other reason?
No, because we, we just, we need, we need, we use parking area.
I see.
Not parking space.
Okay.
And the way we define parking area, I have a drawing in front of me. I could, at, at the end of this, I'll define parking area, okay? Any, any, any open space used for parking motor vehicles, put a star next to parking area, we may need to define that a little bit better.
That includes, by our definition...
Let's do it right now.
That includes the stalls and the aisles for turning and for backing in.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
But it does not include the ring roads.
Right.
Okay.
Or the...
So, this is a driveway coming in, and these are parking areas here. And these are parking areas here. And these are parking areas, this is an island. This is gravel or grass or otherwise. These are the boundaries. This is a driveway in. This is a driveway out. This area is defined as parking, including this past driveway. Let, let's move this around for, for clarity.
Do some good backup, right?
Okay.
Okay, so the cars, the pass aisle for the vehicles to go in and out of the parking spaces is included in the parking.
Okay.
This driveway at the end, the turnaround, is not included. The driveway coming in and out are not included. But the actual parking areas and the pass space between the two parking areas, or single parking areas, the case may be...
What if it's a single?
The, typically, if there's just a, if there's parking here, and there is normally just in like this, then this would be the parking area, but if this is double wide...
What if it's just single?
Single wide, then the single parking drive-through is included. Okay? Because no, very few people are putting in extra pavement that they don't need. They're making this area, in other words, if this parking space, just drawing the picture. You understood the double parking?
Mm-hmm.
You have an island, same picture. Drive around. If there's only enough space for a single parking, it depends on the width of this. People are, I don't know of any, any business that's making this, this is typically like ten-foot wide. And then the parking area is twenty-one or whatever it may be, depending on the single parking, okay? Businesses are not making this double wide and only putting in parking on half. If you understand, understand, that, that's almost like a, there's an awful lot of blacktop extra there.
Right.
It's not needed. So, this would be a single drive and parking. This would still all be included as parking. The turnaround would not, and the driveway in, driveway out would not. Now, for some reason, somebody made this double wide. Again, we haven't seen that. From a planning board point of view, I would say half of the, half of the drive is parking. The other half is not, because this is not being designed for parking. This is being designed as a driveway. Do you see, do you follow me?
I think so.
In other words, this, this area is for cars to come in...
Yeah.
And back out.
The island can be...
The island is not included, no.
Oh, right, right, yep.
But this second, so this is like a two-lane highway. One lane would be included as the parking. The second lane would not, because this is not being used for parking in any way, shape, or form. It's a driveway.
Right.
Okay? So, we need to define parking area more...
Jim, why don't you try out a definition and send it along to us?
That, that might, this, parking area may need a picture.
Okay.
And then maybe from the picture, as an independent person, you can say, you could put words to it.
Okay.
Because we might be too buried in our...
Right.
Our, um, idea as to really give it a good definition, may not come out right.
Right.
Okay.
So, you, you don't have a graphic already?
No, no, just that the, the, excuse me, the, the several, um, surveyors and engineering firms that typically come in here understand that, because we've worked with them on it. The new ones that have never, um, been in here before, when we explain to them, okay, we get it. But somebody that's never had it explained to them may not have any understanding of this. It is different.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it does give us some wiggle room, whereas if you, for example, you heard the storage people saying, "We don't need that parking", as opposed to some rush bus that need a lot more parking, so we don't get into that. I need this, maybe I need that, maybe...
But if they don't need it, they still have to have provisions for, in case it changes, you, you need it.
That's exactly correct, because we...
Because it's the only place you can go.
No other place, right.
Right.
And many things have changed, right?
Okay, I, I just wanted to go back a second. I don't like the definition of owner that you have there, and I'm not sure where we have, where it relates to in the bylaw.
Okay.
What's that, Bill?
The definition of owner, it's just too broad.
What's the, what's the legal term of an owner?
Do, the bigger question is, do we use it in our bylaw?
Yeah, I guess that's part of it.
Okay, I'll look.
Uh, I don't think we do, and, um...
Scared, when you've been on this for so long that you know certain words ought to be in our bylaw.
Alright, I'll take a look at that.
What's the legal term of an owner, that's all.
Well, I would normally consider it as the person who has title to the property. And that, but, that does not appear here. Talking about agents, attorneys, purchasers, debizies, trustees, lesses, or any person having vested or legal or equitable interest. Um, so, that's...
It should, it should be defined, right?
If it, if it's in the bylaw, it should be defined. If it's not even in the bylaw, we don't need it. We don't need it.
Okay, under open space, going back up top, uh... I guess, yeah, your highlighted one is the one we wanna go with. We don't, we don't need the twenty percent, because that's already in the bylaw and in other sections.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have anything in this bylaw for snow storage?
No, there's not in the bylaw either. I don't think the word, oh, I take that back.
It might be something inside plant.
No, there's nothing in there for snow storage. Okay, we can get to that, we keep that in mind when we get to there, when the rest, okay. Um, personal and consumer service establishment. It says, you know, establishing services for the general public, such as hairdressing, catering, cleaning, legal, financial counseling, accounting, or technical support. What does technical support mean?
I would assume related to computers or anything.
I know.
Right?
Well...
Define.
I, we wanted to find technical support. Okay.
Jim, before we move on, uh... You were leaning to the open space, the one that's highlighted in the yellow. But one of the things that's always concerned about is the, uh...
The last sentence?
The designated wetlands and designated, uh... A storage of water area, you know, detention ponds. We, that should be included, because people always wanna include that in their green space. In, in our bylaws, it, it's specifically...
What is it, retention or detention?
Either one. Both, both, both would not be...
Well, one retains for a little while.
Retention means the water sits on a property till it evaporates. Detain means it sits on a property till it's eventually drained off through a pipe. Detain versus retain.
Yeah, habit police will detain you, but the sheriff will retain you.
Anyway, good.
So, you wanna add to that at the end after water courses?
Not including, um, det, retain...
Oh, not including?
Not including...
Okay, so that should be at the very end.
Yes. Yeah, not including retention, detention ponds, or, or water courses.
Designated wetlands.
Designated wetlands. Yep.
Okay.
Place of amusement is okay. Primary structure. Principal building structure, least principal, professional office. The office of a recognized profession. What is a recognized profession?
Uh, that's a good question.
If you ask the members of this board alone, you would get a huge...
Uh-huh.
Right, I'm gonna start off with a BS artist.
That's a good question.
Okay. Um, recognized profession to me means like a tradesperson. Not a doctor, a lawyer, an engineer, or otherwise.
That's interesting, I wouldn't think of it that way.
Right.
Okay.
A lawyer is a profession.
That's my, that's my point, but the way this is used in the bylaw, I don't think that is what, from my point of view, and I'm only speaking for me,
Okay.
should be a tradesperson as opposed to a doctor, lawyer, or an engineer, or one of those professions. Because I'm waiting, let me explain that. In a bylaw, that those are permitted uses, not permitted uses, but they're allowed uses in home occupation or something like that. Going back to the original idea that a carpenter, or an electrician, or one of those tradespeople would have their office in their house, virtually nobody would come to see them except on super rare occasion, and they typically go to the customer to service them.
That's for home occupation?
Again, yes, home, home occupation, home business. I'm using that as a general home business.
Okay.
With the general idea that there is very little customer traffic coming to see them. No, no, no cars, no automobile, stuff like that. You get an engineer, a lawyer, a doctor, or one of those types, or accountant, they don't come to you, you come to them, and you greatly increase...
Right.
The traffic going to that dwelling.
So, that could, would be a professional office, like a professional office building, not a home occupation?
Well, what does professional office refer to in a zoning bylaw? I don't know the professional, I don't know the...
Okay, we'll look at that, but I, I would assume that it would be not a home occupation.
Right, again, I'm not sure of the word.
So, the recognized profession comes from one section of the bylaw.
Right.
And our general office space, which would include professional offices, is in another section of the bylaw.
Oh.
And this conflates them.
Okay.
So, we just want to separate them accordingly to what...
Okay.
Okay, and I, I've known, you know, no sir.
Okay.
You're right, and it's becoming fuzzy or cloud or, I mean, you're doing the computer work at home.
Back, back, back in nineteen sixty-one, whoever thought, I mean, you had engineers, doctors, and lawyers back then, but you didn't have computer tech people and how, how many other things? You know, um, you know CPA was a rare animal back then. A financial advisor was probably nonexistent.
Do we have dressmaking, candy making as, as a business?
That's traditional home occupation.
That's the original home occupation.
How many, how many candy makers and dressmakers do we have in town? You know, um, people make candy, but, no sir.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Um... Everything else on that page I'm good with. Self-storage, self-storage. Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think most of it all, I mean, everything else... Yeah, I think most of it all, I mean, everything else, what word? Half-story. Okay, street.
Ooh. There's something we need to do.
Okay, so street I'm good with. Substantial improvement. Substantial improvement is defined as 25% of the original, um, value?
That's what this says.
Oh, wait a minute, improvement to a structure or building which exceeds 25% of the original footprint. No, substantial, that's missing something there.
Yes, improvement to.
Approved structures which exceed 25% of the original footprint? What does that mean? If I, if I improve 25% of the footprint, that's a major substantial improvement?
Right.
What is? That's just as fuzzy as substantial.
Well, it doesn't appear anywhere in our bylaws, if you're referring to site plan, that's 10%, so you don't want it to conflict with any.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying improvement to a structure or building which exceeds 25% of the original footprint of such structure or building. Yeah. So, if I have a thousand-square-foot building, and I have four windows in it, and I replace one of them, that's 25% of the structure.
It's not exceeding the structure of the, uh, the size of the footprint.
That's the footprint, okay, so what we have here is actually a couple of different standards. Uh, for site plan approval, we can waive site plan approval if the change affects less than 10% of the existing floor area.
Right.
And the village center overlay district, we can find it as, we defined it as 33% of the current assessed value.
Yes, that's what I'm more concerned with is the value as opposed to, as opposed to, how do you affect? What is affecting 25% of the footprint mean?
So if the building was 100 square feet, and you added 25% additional square feet.
25 to 25% of that footprint, and put a new floor in it. Is that a substantial improvement?
I don't think so according to this definition.
I disagree with you.
Okay, so.
I'm affecting 25% of the footprint. All I'm saying is this should be a value of the building, not a size of the building.
Okay.
So, and I might part with you there, that we might want a double standard, that there are some projects that are not expensive, but are going to change the, you know, for example, adding the Young Men's Club Pavilion to an existing restaurant. It may not exceed 33% of the assessed value, but might double the floor area.
Okay.
So.
That, that's, that's a good point. All, that's, substantial improvement needs some, needs some investigation.
Right, I think a lot of towns do it this way, whether this is the specific, you know, best definition.
Okay.
May not be the case.
We, we, we need to look at substantial improvement, just before, without, without belaboring it right here now. For the most part, this, this definition section is wonderful.
Good.
I mean, we got, yeah, we, we gotta do some tweaking right here and there, but, I mean, we're gonna be.
And you'll probably have to do more later.
Oh, we're gonna always be tweaking this. We're gonna find, oh, gee, that's kind of good. Okay, that's fine.
Right now.
You know.
Right.
And having, having zero versus having something is an improvement. Okay. All right, so we are on trailer.
Great definition.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, wait, back up. Snow removal.
Oh, right.
We have nothing.
Should add that, huh?
We need to add something on snow removal.
Snow removal, so is there something?
Snow, snow removal, or?
Two things. We can't just add a definition to snow removal if it doesn't relate to something.
Well, that's what I was asking.
I think site plan approval has to know something about snow in it. Section eight.
What is that, section one?
I think section eight is site plan approval.
Yeah, I skimmed through that, I did that same thing.
Didn't they have some problems back when the Dawson was alive? With the malls, with, with areas of.
That was a DEP regulation.
To snow, to store.
Yeah.
But it's just like where.
Where can you put it?
Right.
In other words, some farmers were taking it on their property.
Would salt on it, and everything else.
So, this one needs a little bit more research, I think.
Okay. Um, we'll see if it's referred to in regulations.
Is there a DEP regulation or?
No, there is.
Well, there may be.
Trees trees or anything.
And it depends how it relates to regulations.
Yeah.
And they are.
Yeah, we, we never, that was, that was, that was put in many, many years ago. We never really got into that one much, you're right.
You think it should be done?
I think it'd be a good idea to, to address it because you started removing a lot of these big trees, they're taking a lot of, the root ball is huge, and the dirt is, after 10 or 15 years, you can actually see a depression in the soil.
Just look right behind the golf station.
Look, just look on a dump, the roads on a dump where, where the wall, where they've taken out some big trees, how much lower the ground is.
So with the snow removal, you're mostly concerned about the storage of the snow?
Yeah, on, on site.
I'm looking, I'm looking for where it appeared in the bylaw so we can utilize it.
Yeah.
Yeah, two things, and number one, adequate place for s- snow storage, and number two, if there's not adequate people, they will, will have it trucked off.
Where?
Where? Is that our responsibility, or is that the responsibility of the conservation commission, or is that a state regulation?
But it creates another heading.
We do have snow removal. It's not in site plan approval, it's in. Good thing Joe's over there.
Sometimes, a blind squirrel can find a name accordingly.
Oh boy, here we go with his jokes. What section are you on?
Twelve. 12.5.9. Stockpiling and disposal of snow or ice brought in from outside the district is not allowed.
So what do you do with it?
That means you don't bring it into the act of protest district, there could be a few.
Well, you may not be able to deal with this all
Right.
how you want in the definitions section.
Right, no, no.
You'll have to go somewhere else, yeah.
Having it in the definitions means nothing if it doesn't tie in. That was one thing I was gonna suggest, so I'll just ramble for a while while Jim's looking.
Okay.
What I would like to see is, uh, what I'll call two-way pointers. Where applicable, so that, for example, some of these definitions about, uh, uh, the home occupations. But you, they've taken some of them out, where, where you have taken a definition out of a section. Um, and we're going to then amend the bylaw to delete the reference. I'd like to see just a, a footnote or something saying, "See definitions." You know, we can delete the definitions, but leave the heading and say, "See definition section."
You, and.
Because that doesn't apply to all of them. There are, some are being taken out, some are not, so there are no solar definitions in here.
Yep.
But there are definitions of, you know, for example, accessory apartment definition has been taken out of the accessory apartment bylaw and put into the definition section. So, I would like to, and the whole bed and breakfast definitions are being taken out of the bed and breakfast section. And putting into definitions.
Yeah, that shouldn't be.
So, I'd like to see in the definitions, say, say, "See section 22." And in the bed and breakfast, "See definition section." So that, you know, people who aren't used to cross-referencing and looking for definitions everywhere.
I don't know, I, I understand about putting it in a regular section to refer to the definition section. If you put, for every definition, every place it's referenced in the regulations, that might just make this really complicated.
For, for some, but for example, the four bed and breakfast definitions, if you're gonna take them out of the bed and breakfast section, they only relate back to the bed and breakfast section.
Right.
So, for these, you could clearly say, "See section," you know, whatever it is.
Okay.
Maybe not for all of them, but.
All right.
So that's, that's actually the, that's one of the things that has stopped us from getting too far along with the definition section sometimes is the more comprehensive you make the definition section, um, you can make everything else shorter, but, you know, you have.
Your last page.
On your last page, you, you laid out, um, definitions remaining in their own section. In fact, you say, "Section 22, Bed and Breakfast Facilities." On the last page, you say, you left those definitions in their section. But on page two, you've taken them out. You put it in this section. So, it's just that, um.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that is.
Yeah, it's just that I'd like there to be some predictability, so that people would, I, I'd like there to be some predictability, so that you aren't taking, you aren't stripping definitions out of some sections, but not out of others. Uh, when it, you know, I don't know what it adds to the definition section to strip those out, especially Larry said he was leaving them in. So.
Well, wasn't the idea of this so people can easily understand this and find things besides us?
Yes, uh, yeah, that's, that's the point, but if you, if you start taking definitions out of the sections, if you start taking section-specific definitions out of some sections, but not out of others, you've created a.
And I'm not sure exactly why
Yeah.
that happened.
Are you going to one section for all definitions?
No, they're not.
Well, so.
Mostly, but not a hundred percent.
What I'm saying here is that in this, bottom of page two, there are four definitions relating to the bed and breakfast bylaw. Those definitions have no applicability to anything else in the bylaw. But bed and breakfast. And here in the end, Larry put in a section, I'm gonna pick on Larry because I know you didn't do all this. Uh, definitions remaining in their own sections, bed and breakfast facilities. So, either you're taking them out, you're taking every definition out and putting it in the definition section, or you're not.
Right.
And if you have some definitions that are just exclusive to one section of the bylaw, they probably don't have to be in the definition section.
Right, but it, it sounds like to me if, if a person was looking for something, bed and breakfast, and here's all the definitions for it, it's easier to deal with, instead of running back all over it.
And, and that, that's perfectly legitimate, it, then you, yeah, it's.
You wanna make it user-friendly, you know, I mean, it's.
There's, there's no good answer to either question here. Because they're both valid. John's point is valid, and Bill's point is valid.
I think most zoning regulations do have a definition section.
Uh, yes, they, they, they do. And I've read many of them, and they're, it's a mixed bag.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And, um, I think because maybe they haven't had that discussion about what do you move, and what do you, what do you not move.
So we'll try and make it as consistent as possible, and I'll understand better why some.
So, John, to your point, if you, if you look, if you wanna put a solar field in, and you don't care about anything else.
Right.
If, the definition section is not as helpful, because the terms can be separated by five pages. Whereas, you look at the solar section, and all your definitions are on one page. But you want something like dwelling or accessory use, that, that, you know, some of them definitely belong in a central location, and.
Because they appear throughout the zoning bylaw. What's very specific section, one maybe should go back to that section, something to consider.
Yeah, I will find out if there's rationale for the bed and breakfast, or any of those other ones that are like that, yeah.
Because, for example, I noticed none of the solar definitions came over. They did stay in their section.
Yeah.
And the now wanted dispensary stayed in their section.
Overlay disperse.
Use accessory. I don't like the highlighted definition.
Okay.
Not to exceed 40% of the area of the total use of the structure. Do you realize how large some houses are in Hadley? 40% of a 4,000-square-foot house is a lot. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you, as an accessory, you only allow 900 square feet.
Right, but this definition gives them 40% of the house. So if you've got a 2,000-square-foot house, or a 3,000, 4,000, let's say a 3,000-square-foot house, your accessory use can be about 1,400 square feet.
Did that contradict?
Yes, yes, exactly, that's why I'm saying, I don't like the use, I like the original accessory use.
Okay.
Or maybe maybe we take out and modify somehow that last sentence.
That might make sense.
Okay, combine the one we have with the first sentence that does, I like the first sentence, that's, that's, that's good.
Okay.
But I don't like the one about the 40%.
Yep.
And somehow put them together. I mean, we don't need the, the dressmaking, I mean, some of those things like that.
Yeah. All right, so we can figure out how to make that work better.
Non-conforming, that's useful. Yeah, use principle, the highlighted use is better, no question. Variance yard, front yard, oh wait, front yard. This is ours. That's proposed.
I like the car's player.
I just want to add that myself.
The front yard?
Yeah.
Minimum unoccupied.
I, I think I like. So it's almost like we don't need to define front yard, because front yard setback has nothing to do with the front yard, really.
Yeah. I like our front yard,
Okay.
our rear yard, and our side yard better than the highlighted ones.
That's right.
Now, yard line, we don't use the word yard, we don't, I don't even know the yard line in periods of the bylaws. A line parallel to the lot. A line parallel to the lot. A line parallel to a lot line, a distance therefrom equal to the depth of the required yard. A line parallel to a lot line, a distance therefrom equal to the depth of the required... What in the world is that?
Is that in the diagram?
Well, the, the rear yard, Jim, or whoever, which one do you like better, the highlighted one?
I like our rear yard, side yard, and front yard better.
Okay, the rear yard required unoccupied space or between the lot, between the rear lot line and rear, so unoccupied space, you could have an accessory building there with that.
Oh, is that me?
Whereas the...
I don't, I don't think that would really affect it.
Okay. Whereas the highlighted one, the new one says the principal building.
Is there a definition for lot line?
So, I'm looking at the diagram, and the diagram shows a side yard line and a rear lot line.
A lot separating a lot from the street right of the... Rear lot line and side lot line, okay, that's lot line.
And a yard line, side yard line. Oh, and a rear yard line too, yeah? There in there.
The lot line, rear lot line, and the side line, that's what we're talking about, okay? What a yard line, a line parallel to a lot line, a distance therefrom equal to the depth of the required...
Okay, yard line doesn't, doesn't make any, doesn't...
Well, because it's here, yard line, rear yard line.
No, 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 yard line, we don't get the definition of your, a line parallel to a lot line, a distance therefrom equal to the depth of the required yard. That's exactly what it says.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not really good on that last part.
Yeah, the last, the last four or five words.
You've got a lot to define, now why are you defining the yard?
I don't know.
Okay.
You're trying to talk about the same two things, aren't you?
Rear lot line, you don't use yard line anywhere here. Side yard line.
Side yard line.
Rear yard line. A line parallel to a lot line. A distance therefrom equal to the depth of the required yard.
Why don't you just add that for a lot line?
So the yard is required to be this deep, and that's where the line is, I think that's what it's saying, but it's...
Yeah, we, we call, we call it setback lines. I think that's what this is, I mean, this is referring to like a setback line.
Same, let's see, maybe.
What sounds simple, use it.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, jeez, well...
But you've already got side setback in here.
Right, so, maybe we don't need it.
I don't think you need yard line because it's... Like, we just made it, yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Trying, yeah, explaining that.
There's only a discussion on that to throw down.
Okay.
Yeah, alright.
Okay, very good.
Whoa, that is what I promised.
That's four or five years.
I will take all your comments.
And distill them, and...
And, yeah, so hopefully I'll agree with what I come up with.
We don't be looking at August, uh...
Seventy-eight.
For the next meeting, great.
And I wanna put in a special plug, uh, we're already talking about having the special town meeting in early October.
Oh, yeah, right here, we got some good ones, we have the special town meeting warrant articles they would like to have due August one. Now, we get a lot of leeway, one, we, we let the administrator know, David Nixon, on August one, how many spaces we would like under warrant. He typically gives us until sometime in later September, uh, early September, to get them in.
Okay.
When is the town meeting, special town meeting?
Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, it's the same week of our, of our... Couple days later.
Oh, our, when is our, what?
Thursday.
Thursday the eighteenth?
Yeah.
Tennessee.
Tennessee.
The town meeting.
Oh, special town meeting, okay.
Right.
Okay, so, um, the last... You were talking about getting the recreational marijuana bylaw with a target of late August.
June twenty-one.
Yeah, uh, and Larry has already a model together that, um, we're meeting with group on Monday to review.
Okay.
And, so I think it should be before that.
Okay, because we, we very much, we, we need time to digest it ourselves, and...
If we're gonna, okay.
So we're gonna need it, uh, hopefully in July.
Okay, I think that's doable, I'll double check with him, but I think so. And let you know.
Because if it doesn't get to us until August, uh, you know, we're really bumping up against, uh, just time to...
Yeah.
We wanna make sure town, town council looks at it. Just for everybody, remember, June twentieth, we have a joint meeting with the board of selectmen at seven o'clock.
Wonderful.
To talk about the, uh, sub, the affordable housing by, that'll expire. But we also should at least mention to the board of selectmen on that date, and maybe the member here can mention it to have them, at least have them think about it, is part of the more, the marijuana bylaw, typically we set a limit on how many marijuana retail licenses can be issued, and that's based on how many liquor licenses are available. Anything less than twenty percent is considered, um, you need a town meeting and a referendum vote, it's like, it's like not allowing them. So the number wants to be twenty-one percent or greater. And the selectmen are the one that should let, that's, that's actually part of the zoning bylaw, David. So, the planning board will put it into the zoning bylaw, but the selectmen should be the ones letting us know what's that percentage, is it twenty-five percent, fifty percent, I, I don't know, okay?
Anything else for me?
Next time they come, I'll bring in two extra copies, and...
I will do that, I...
I wanna earn my, my salary.
The, uh...
I was thinking you would all bring your own, so now I know.
The, um, next meeting that you would be at would be July third, and that's the day before the fourth of July, so we were talking of not having a meeting that day.
That's good, because I won't be here.
Yeah, that's for sure, still.
So, August, uh...
So August second, I will be back.
And we'd like to have, like Bill said, you know, the, um, hopefully we can get the definitions.
Yep.
M S five, or M S six, I'm sorry, we need M S six. Oh, wait.
You mean the M S four?
Um, M S, M S four, yes.
Although you had sent an email, which I think forwarded to everyone.
Right, that said that we probably shouldn't do anything right now with it.
Because the state is still working.
The state is reading, even though it's wanting to go on a...
So it's all ready to go, and I had gone through and cut and pasted what was given to you before, so it's real clear, and then new sections are highlighted, and, so it's all ready, but when the state is ready, then is the better time, because we might have to do some other things.
We don't need, we're, we're, we're telling any, any of our reviewing engineers to review it according to the new M S four guidelines.
Okay.
Whether or not it's used in the bylaw or not, and they can, they can come after it, but go ahead, I mean, you'll tie us in court for years doing this, as opposed to making a few changes in your design.
And then M S four will be applicable.
Yeah. So, um, that's, we, we, we're, we're okay with that.
Okay.
But, question for, on the M S four, I know the original thing was to take it out of zoning, put it in general.
Right.
And what is your latest recommendation, do we have one?
That is the recommendation, that's how we have it laid out, is its own section, stormwater.
In the general bylaw?
Yes.
And how do we reference that so that developers know to go there to look for that?
Well, you definitely will reference it in the zoning, there's a chart that tells, that goes along with that, that tells where it needs to be referenced from the zoning and from other regulations.
Okay, that's fine.
In town.
Okay, good, thank you.
So, for August, you need the, you want the definitions again, and the recreational marijuana?
Yes, yeah, that would be wonderful to have that.
Yep, and I'll let you know if there's gonna be a problem with any of that.
And if you get them, hit it, bring, email them to Bill, and distribute.
And what is that time, town meeting set for, October?
October eighth, October eighteenth is the tentative thing. We've already been ordered.
Okay, great.
Very good, thank you very much.
Welcome, I'll see you in August.
Nice, alright, well, we went over a lot today.
You guys earned your keep tonight. Look at John's fall asleep over there, hey, John?
Oh, there he is.
Digital information, the finance committee is meeting at six o'clock tomorrow night in the town hall to discuss various special town meeting, warrant processing, and a few other things. And the C P A is meeting on June eleventh at the Gold Court Public Room to discuss C P A items.
Golden Court, not Gold?
Gold Court, yeah. Gold Court Public Room, forty-two Golden Court.
Gold, that's golden, ain't it?
No, it says Gold Court Public Room, yeah, Golden Court.
What about the Silver Room?
I don't know, I only read what's in front of me.
When is that?
That's on June eleventh.
June eleventh. Larry's supposed to make his presentation as to policy for C P A.
Okay, so the finance committee is meeting on June sixth and June seventh at six P M in the town hall. Discuss special town meeting, transfers, and stuff like that. Okay?
Hi.
Yes.
Message for the planning board, I talked to Dave Nixon, and he said he could have Nyhard Secretary do our minutes for us.
Okay.
And, you know, whether you contact him, he said there's time for her, she would take the film and do the minutes, because I feel for, how can we remember what we did six months ago and to accept the minutes? So we should stay current with him, and if, if, if she can do that, and then just come forward and verify it, it would be helpful.
If she could do it for the tape, that would be great.
Right, so, that's all you have to do, is call Nixon about it and send it out.
Okay, I'll talk to her, very good. I can give her my notes the next day.
Maybe between your notes and the, and the thing she can get out, stuff with?
Well, their secretary takes the film, and that's how she puts her minutes together. So she would do the same thing.
Okay. Anything else? Next meeting, next meeting is the nineteenth.
At Hopkins Academy.
Yes, at Hopkins Academy, right. John's all set for that one? The nineteenth and Hopkins?
Yeah, it's in the middle one.
Very good. That is for the senior center and the library, um, site plan approval, the whole rest of them.
Do you have anything else for us?
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Section.
All in favor? All right, meeting is history, thank you, and thank you, John.